I would like to open the Tuesday, September 20th, regular planning board meeting. This is being recorded, video recorded, audio recorded. It may be going out live on television as well. First up is administrative items. First is Chapter 61 release, file number 22-003-CH61. Select Board is requesting comments on the release of land owned by Paul L. and Viola P. Gay located at Zero Division Road, map 48, lot 12. We have quite a bit of, we have, we don't have a plan working?
It's over here.
Oh, it's over there. It's really kind of hard to see. But if you do that, the people in the audience can't see it. So, okay, right there. So this is on Zero Division Road. I don't have a locus, so I can't really tell.
No, there's a, there's a.
There's a locus.
Have you, have you?
I don't see one, but there is a, apparently the Gays entered into a purchase and sale with a company out of town. They are, two years ago in July, and they had a right, a right of first refusal, or they could, they could, they had a option to buy that was exercised on the day before the two years expired. Apparently what they want to do with that parcel, the buyers, is make a solar farm or install solar panels, they don't really tell you what. And it's a fairly large lot, if I recall, it's like thirty acres.
Thirty acres.
So the question is, is this something that should be looked at for conservation? Or should we give no opinion, or should we opine that it's okay to release? And I really can't find the locus. Anybody else find the locus? I can see it, but I don't see a locus, I don't know where this is.
This is our division.
This is probably a couple miles north of, of the intersection of Division and Horseneck.
Yep.
Full Horseneck, East Horseneck.
And it's contiguous with land also owned by Paul and Viola Gay. It looks like open farm field stuff. They don't have.
So what is the purchase price?
It's close to a million.
Nine twenty-five.
And I don't know if there's any other conservation lands close to it, next to it. I can't really tell from this photo if there's a stream going through it. Something of this size, I would think there must be some kind of stream.
I think the other piece of property that's abutting it has some wetlands on it, but I don't. I don't think that property does, I know the one on the, abutting it does. That's also owned by the Gays.
Okay. I don't know what the feeling of the board is, but I don't feel that I have enough information to.
Do we have any recommendation from you, Amy, on this?
I don't have any solid recommendation, I just know that around 2018, this was also wanting to get out of the Chapter 61 forestry for solar, and they decided, they decided to go against it and they pulled out from it, so that's the only.
What do you mean they decided to go against it? Who decided to go against it?
Themselves, I guess they, whatever company maybe they had pulled out at that moment, and they didn't go through with pursuing to release it.
And this is a different company, different solar company?
I'm not sure if it's a different solar company, but it was for the same, the same reason for solar in 2018 and now for solar again.
So in 2018, I think it was also land owned by the Gays off of Horseneck Road. It was probably just over here. I think it's not far to Horseneck Road, right?
No, it's not far from Horseneck Road.
And the, the abutters on the other side of Horseneck were really against it, and I think that the Gays finally gave up and discontinued their, their solar endeavor over there. And this is a different piece. And I don't know if the same stream goes through there to, to that piece branch.
When I looked at it in the Google Drive, the same map and lot came up with the same book and page and date of August 7th, 1995. So I was under the impression that it was the same piece of property.
I don't think it is, because it was on Horseneck. When's our next meeting?
October 4th.
Jim, it's possible that there is a wetland, because I, I don't know either. But generally speaking, Horseneck Road is sort of the top of a.
A ridge, yeah.
A ridge, and it falls off to the river on the west and to the east, it drops down, come down, this sort of maple swamp through there that runs north-south. And it's a place that buries out and drains to the river. I can't say whether this is impacted by that.
So this would be north of Cross Road?
No, no, south, I think.
South?
No.
She, she hasn't pulled up?
Oh.
No, no, it's not, you're right, it's not.
So you, you can search, search by, uh, map 48, lot 12, or by the, by the, the Gays.
Yeah, but it's not at Cross Road.
Well, is it possible, Mr. Chairman, to table this till our next?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Gather some more information from some people, what they know, so. And I think we have time, I mean. It's like a little wet car across the front of you.
Could you just pan up and see where we are? I, I said.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I think you should go into it.
So, so move it. At our next meeting.
I'd move that we table this for our next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is approval not required, A and R, Zero Gifford Road for Pacheco, file number 22-002A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a plan of land showing two lots of, for land located at Zero Gifford Road, map 29, lot 22C and 22D. Is there somebody here for that?
Just, uh, maybe Chico and Shosse here.
Okay, you want to come up and?
Sure.
Tell us what you're doing?
Yeah, we're just basically purchasing that piece of land from Tiago Sousa, the abutter. So we prepared the A and R plan in order to purchase the land and report it.
It's like a large thing.
A man.
What, large?
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Do we have it as paper here, or just that? Could you put it up on the board so we can also?
Yes, I don't think you guys are familiar with this project already. We are looking to purchase this hatch area from a neighbor. So once that's done, both lots will be formed, have enough frontages in the areas we still don't like back with areas as well.
Okay. So all together. So the, the land is to be, the, the property line to be extinguished, you show.
Let me here, this line here, and we propose this, this, this line here.
Right, and that comes from where?
It's all belongs to Tiago, the Tiago.
It comes here.
It comes from that lot.
Yeah, strangely.
So Amy, it's hard for me to read this small print on this small piece, but is there, is there a reference on here that says that approval is not, what do we say? Approval of this A and R plan is not guaranteed.
It's not, it doesn't constitute a buildable or zoning or anything like that.
Yeah, those notes should be on there.
Yep, it's on the, it's small, but it's on the left-hand side in the middle, right after the legend and abbreviations.
So we have the A and R plan before us, the only thing that we can determine is whether or not it's a subdivision. It is not, and I would entertain a motion to approve. I just wanted to make a comment that it, I think it's a confusing plan. It, it usually is more defined where the, where the property is coming from visually, as opposed to just in writing, so. But that being said, I don't think that we would not endorse it, so I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve endorsement of the plan entitled Approval Not Required assessment of plat, 29 lots, 22C and 22D, Gifford Road, Westport, Massachusetts, because the plan complies with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We can have it signed, but don't forget you have to have it registered as a registry of deeds.
Of course.
Next would be the 6:15 public hearing for Zero Gifford Road, file number 22-003SP-CD, continued from August 9th, 2022. This is a request by the applicant to consider the special permit applications of Emmanuel B. Pacheco for property located at Zero Gifford Road between 225 Gifford Road and 237 Gifford Road, assessors map 29 lots 22C pursuant to Westport zoning bylaws, section 8.5, for a common driveway special permit servicing two lots.
I believe that's the wrong project, that's the one a little bit further down the street. I believe that meeting is being continued.
Okay, we have heard this before, I don't know, are there any differences?
Um, basically, yes, I revised the yield plan. This time we utilized a rural road design on the dead ends, which approved by the bylaws. This would allow us to get three dwelling units on, on the site. As you can see, you'll have one dwelling unit on the right side, single-family dwelling. On the right side, we'd be able to develop that as a duplex unit. The duplex unit would have over 200 feet of frontage. The, the frontage for the single-family would have 183 feet of frontage.
Okay, and looking at this plan this afternoon, I think that this yield plan is defective.
In what way?
It doesn't have enough frontage.
Yeah, you get the legal frontage from the rural lane.
No, you don't. You have about 140 feet on the left-hand one on the rural road, and on the right-hand one, you have about 120, and you can't use the frontage from both roads.
I'm pretty sure we read that the frontage can, you can use the rural road for your frontage.
Yes, but you can't use it as well as Gifford.
Okay, so you're saying we need to extend it further?
You'd need to extend it so that you have 200 feet.
Okay.
For the duplex and 150 feet for the single family.
Yeah, I think that could still be done and revised, that would need to be revised in order to show that. But that should, yeah, it should still should work out, even by extending that roadway. Obviously, I can't do that right now, but I see how, we can talk about that plan.
So I, I guess, so the question is, I think the comments that were made at the last meeting still pertain, it, it doesn't seem like you're reducing the density. It seems like you're increasing the density basically by, by doing that, and, well, you know, I, I don't want you to go to, through the process of revising this plan once again and come back and still have a, have an issue with the approval. So I would open it to the rest of the board, and if you can see through this and assume that the rural residential lane is long enough to give frontage to those two lots, is this the intention of the bylaws that he is asking to use?
Well, i- if we can extend the road and everything works, that would be three residential units.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, the plan, the proof plan as is presented, the, the test in the regulations, and we, we talked about, you know, this board allows people to use the land and allows people to buy their land, but we, we have the regulations, and, and the regulations says that you have to submit a proof plan that is compliant with this, with all the provisions of the subdivision rules and regulations. This plan is not consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations. And then 8.6.2 of the regulations, it says that you should create a, a plan that shows the conventional subdivision showing the basic number of lots that could be created. So the A and R plan is fine, that's fine.
Sure.
Then, and let's, let's imagine for a moment that you actually had a plan that was compliant, that you did a subdivision that was longer and had met all the requirements, and you showed two lots.
Okay.
Okay. So that's what you got, you've got two lots, all right? And then you ask, then you ask us to come in and, and do, waive the frontage requirements so that you don't have to build a rural road and just have a common driveway, so that's your, your request.
Yep.
And, and at the end of the day, if we approve that and put a plan on record, issue you a special permit and put that plan on, not that plan, the plan that shows the two lots with the, with the subdivision and show the common driveway, those, those two lots are entitled to have four dwellings on them. Lots that we approved and that we created a special permit for, you could do a duplex on both those lots, so there's no reduction in, in the frontage. I know, I know that's not your intent to do that, but let, let's say the world changes a little bit, somebody else buys it, and someone said, hey, you know, when I have a buildable lot, the law says I can new a two-family home on this, on a, on a lot. And, and if we grant this waiver, this is not a reduction. And, and if you, if you, I'm quite sure you could do a compliant subdivision.
Yes, we can.
And you can get the two lots and you can build two houses.
Yes.
That's why we approved the A and R, and you could come back in and, and instead of having a 12-foot wide or a 14-foot wide common driveway, you're going to have a, you know, 20-foot gravel driveway, but, but if you wish to buy this property and get two lots, you can do that, but I don't think you can do it through a waiver of.
Okay, well, the, the, I, nowhere that I've seen in the, in the flexible frontage for reduced density that say that we need to show reduction in lots, it says a reduction in density. And density is defined as dwelling units per acre. So by going from three to two, that's a reduction. Every standard definition of development density is units per acre, and not defined as lots.
Show us, if you show me where that's the definition of density in zoning, I'll listen to your argument.
Okay, I have a section, there's a, there's a section in here which mentions density. It's not the same section, but it's a different one, and calls out, says density, this is for, I believe this is for the Napocheo overlay district. There's a section that says density and says the maximum number of dwelling units allowed shall be established by calculation based on the net usable land area. So that's some evidence that says it's defined as dwelling units, that's one. Every other standard definition that we could pull from the internet defines it as the number of housing units divided by the land area. I have several numerous examples of that. So I think either the bylaws needs to be redone if the intent was to reduce lots, or I think that this should be the way that you see, unless there's another, another definition that I haven't seen for development density.
I share my opinion.
Is there a definition, does anyone know the definition that defines that?
I think what we would go back to is the intention and how we interpret the intention of the plan. And others?
Well, first of all, can you put up the other plan with the, with the, which is, I think, what you're trying to achieve?
The concept plan?
The concept plan, with the two houses. No, put it alongside so we can see both of them.
I want to know where my hands, because I don't. I need a next to my hand here.
There's one on the right there.
There we go. It's a stuck one. Oh, we got a stop? There you go.
So if I understand what your objective is, it's to develop, show us the plan on the left.
Yes.
That if you can fix the rural residential lane.
Yep.
Would establish, in your thinking, the ability to have three dwelling units.
Yes.
A duplex and a single family.
Correct, which is more dense than two.
And then you want to then turn to us and say, but in lieu of that, you would want to build this plan on the right, which is two single-family homes using flexible frontage and common driveway.
Yes.
Now, well, I guess. One question I have is, if the plan, if you take that plan on the left.
Yep.
And you take the two fam, the, the two family, the duplex away and substitute it with another single-family home.
Yep.
Right, you've got, you don't need flexible frontage and common driveway.
Yes.
If you make that lane compliant.
That's, that's possible, but we also have a separate system that's already installed that we're trying to work around. Extending that road is, we'd have to relocate other components, so the flexible frontage would work better for us.
Well, and, I mean, the other aspects of, of the intent, we're talking about the intent of the bylaw relative to flexible frontage and common driveways are, in addition to reduction of density, it's also things like reducing the amount of clearing, the amount of stormwater runoff, and.
Road congestion.
Reducing the number of driveways.
Yep.
And when I look at these two plans, it's hard for me to vision, envision that you are going from the left to the right hand, you're achieving much of that reduc, any of that reduction, of those aspects, or quite little.
You'd be, you'd be reducing the dwelling units, you'd be reducing the driveways, you'd be reducing road congestion from one less house being on there.
What do you mean by driveways? I mean, you got.
Well, once we put a rural road, we'd have separate driveways to go into each unit off, off the rural road. Yeah, we'd have one driveway, no frontage, no lots. So you'd have a rural road, two to three driveways.
Well, it's, it's a single, both cases, one curb cut, right?
Coming off the main road, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, my, my, what I'm trying to prove is it's a reduction of density based on the standard definition of development density.
I, I understand that, but you're also, I, I don't see how you're gaining some of the other, or you're achieving some of the other intents of the, of the, the flexible frontage and common driveway bylaws, which as I just stated, include things like reducing the amount of land that you have to clear or reduce, you still have to drain same similar amounts of stormwater, um, coming off to.
The upland portion of the land, most of it's relatively cleared, so it, it, as part of another project that has happened, even before the purchase happened, that's, that's already done, you can't go backwards and fix the, change those things. Also, we did receive the engineering comments just a short while ago, and he states that we have met the bylaw requirements of reduced density in his response. So unless his response doesn't. So unless his response doesn't coincide with what the board is thinking, he at least is on board if it.
He's not a member of the board.
I understand that, he's the consultant.
So the, the question is, if you extend the rural road so that you have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, so you'd need to extend it, what do you, probably another thirty-five or forty feet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then the, the house, the, the houses would have to be set back from that road if they are contiguous with the road.
Yes.
By twenty-five feet.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's the front yard instead of the side yard, right?
Yep.
And I think, you know, if you do that and the rural residential lane is less than a hundred and fifty feet, I don't think you need a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
So, I think that's your best bet.
Is to go with the rural road.
Right. Because then you don't need a special permit for a shared driveway, and you don't need a special permit for the, for the flexible frontage.
Okay, I understand that. However, we are here for flexible frontage and based on everything I've provided, I'm, I think that's evidence showing that we are reducing the development in the area, the density. Say if it were two lots and I was able to develop each lot two duplex homes, and I wanted to go to single fam, say with cul-de-sac design, I wanted to do a duplex on each lot, and instead I said I wanted to do a flexible frontage for two single-family homes, is that considered a reduction in density?
Say that again?
Say we had land, we did a cul-de-sac, we're able to do, we had enough upland to do two duplexes out there and two lots, but instead we wanted, we wanted the frontage using flexible frontage for the main road in order to do two single-family homes, would that be a reduction in density?
I don't think you could get the two lots with the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I'm not speaking to this specific project, I'm just saying, well, this is three, we're going from three units to two, but in a different parcel of land where you could, we could put in a roadway, they had enough frontage to bring in a roadway and a cul-de-sac, those lots also had enough upland, and they wanted to, they could provide a yield plan with four, four duplex, or two duplexes, but they really wanted the frontage on the roadway, and they went with two single-family homes. Would that prove a reduction in density? I think that's a trade-off there.
Yeah, I.
If you had the land, well, now, that's not the situation.
Yeah, this, this situation is three units versus two units.
You couldn't get a cul-de-sac in this situation.
What's that?
You couldn't get a cul-de-sac there.
In this situation, you can get a cul-de-sac with two single-family homes, but I'm just speaking in, in any other project.
And again, it would be, it would be the same thing with, like, you're trying to save the septic that you have there by doing, by even extending your rural roads probably don't interfere with the existing septic.
Yeah, go, go in with any, if you're a road or cul-de-sac, we, we might have to adjust the septic system location.
But I think the answer could be, well, your hypothetical is that, yes, because it's similar to what we went through with Cornell Road. They had, they showed a subdivision to a co, a road with a cul-de-sac and four lots, I believe. And then they proposed a common driveway and two lots.
Mm-hmm.
Using the fre, flexible frontage.
Yeah.
So hypothetically, what you said, I think the answer would be yes.
It would be a reduction in density.
But that's, again, I mean, that's not what, I don't think you can show us here.
I mean, if the regulation were to be a reduction in lots, it would say it needs to show a reduction in lots, but that's not what the regulation says. It says reduction in density. Three houses on, on this, on this land is far more dense than two. That is my point.
Well, I think we have to, to make a decision here, and I would entertain a motion, and I don't, we could let him continue it and fix the yield plan, but the same issues will arise from that. So I think that we should say to that and make a decision. If, if we decide in favor of you, then you're gonna have to come back and show a yield plan that works. But I, I would entertain either a discussion or a motion.
There may be other people here for the meeting who want to speak on behalf, I don't know. I don't know if that matters.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. Do I have to come here?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Olga Alps, and I live across the street from the lot.
Your name is?
Olga Alps.
Okay.
I'm a neighbor on, right across the street from this land.
Okay.
And I have here five signatures from the neighbors that I went around, and everyone agrees, the same thing I do, that we'd rather have two single houses than being a rental.
Two single houses.
Two single-family homes.
Yeah.
Over duplex.
Over a duplex.
Duplex, which the lots currently state you could, you could put a duplex on.
Do you need to see the signatures, everything here?
We have them.
You have them already.
We have them.
Thank you.
And, what is it?
It's a measure of signature.
It's an, oh, this is number one here too. Would you like it?
Yeah, please.
Do you know which one's the extra one?
I don't know.
Okay, can I just keep all of them?
Yeah, you can keep all of them.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Excuse me, ma'am, what is your address?
My address is two fourteen Gifford Road.
Two fourteen.
I live right across.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay.
So, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, you're saying if we vote to approve it, we, you, you said that we would want them to come back with a revised yield plan?
It would be based on a legitimate yield plan. It would have to be submitted. I just, if, if we vote no, I just don't want them to have to go, because it would be the same vote if you came back with a yield plan. So, I think we know it's possible, just as I thought.
Mr. Chairman, the, the time I've been on the, on the board, I, I hear the gentleman's argument, and I did read the regulations again, pretty carefully, the septic. But this would be precedent setting. Now that we do this, we, you, you have to, if someone came in to do, you know, five lots instead of six lots, we could have twelve duplexes threatened. And, you know, this is, this is, at least for the time I've been board, no one's ever done this. And we've never, ever had an application in which the people didn't show a reduction in lots. It's clearly the intent of the bylaw, and, and, and even, even though I won't, I won't argue with your definition, obviously four is less, is, two is less than three, and two is less than four.
Or the technical definition.
But, you know, to me, the, the risk here if we were to do this, since, since you have a solution of extending a road and getting the two lots that you want, and we, I, I think we would be, if, we, you know, if you commit with a subdivision, then with that, you'd have your two lots, you'd have a subdivision, and this would be settled. And you, it wouldn't be precedent setting. To ask us to issue this special permit is, is something that we've never done before.
I mean, based on the words in, in the bylaw, I feel like I have an argument for this, for the density. There's no, nothing says a reduction in lots, that's why I'm here still.
I understand.
Okay.
Like, the neighbors that put up the signatures.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think it's, I mean, you can, you can either put a duplex or you can put a common driveway, you can put a two-bedroom, that's up to you. I mean, like, I, I'm gonna have to agree with Bob on what he says about this would be a precedent, and, and we're gonna have this happen at all. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to agree with Bob, and I, I think your best avenue would be to do your common driveway.
With the road.
Yes. And you get it to us.
Yeah, that's gonna come at an expense to us, that'll happen and relocate septic system components and all that. And I don't, I, that's.
I, I can't even tell if that's absolutely necessary, because if you're only doing single-family homes, you need a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, it's just more, another expense to us, that's the issue.
So this is all predicated in your, it seems, from what you're saying, on this desire to save the existing septic system.
Yes. That, and I would prefer to not have a hundred and fifty-foot road going in there. I think it'd be much better for the neighborhood to just branch off at the front, go your own separate driveways. It's really gonna take up a lot of space on the land putting in the road.
Well, I would, if there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we deny the special permit application.
Second. Is there any more discussion? Do you need a motion as well to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman? We need to close the public hearing first. Actually, so if you could withdraw your motion for the time being.
I will.
I, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then I would entertain a motion.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the special permit for a waiver of the frontage and the, on this, this plan.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need a, a motion to, to either approve or deny the application of a shared driveway. We need to close that hearing too. On this, uh. Uh, two different. Alright, so I move to close that hearing as well. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we need a motion to deny.
I will, I will be denied the special permit for a common driveway.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up would be the public hearing for three oh nine Gifford Road, Carvallo, file number twenty-two dash oh oh four S P dash C D dash F F, continued from September sixth, request by the applicant to consider the special permit applications of Joakim and Sanford Pavelo for property located at three oh nine Gifford Road, Westport, Mass., Assessor's Map Thirty-One, Lot Six pursuant to Westport zoning bylaw section eight point five, special permit for common driveway in section eight point six, special permit for a flexible frontage requesting approval to reduce otherwise applicable frontage requirements on a public way in exchange for a corresponding reduction in development des, density in the construction of a common driveway servicing two residential lots. Are they asking for a continuance?
Yes, the applicant submitted revised plans yesterday and is requesting a continuance until October fourth at six thirty P M. in order to give the consultant time to review.
Good, I'd entertain a motion to that effect. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, if we could have some discussion just a moment.
Sure.
The applicant's command, I, I, you know, I just hope that they pay attention. This plan does a very same thing. This, this plan is exact, is almost exactly the plan that we just denied. This, this, this plan, first of all, it doesn't have a proof plan, doesn't have all that stuff, and it has a bunch of duplex, but, but this is a single lot. And, and it has sufficient frontage for two lots. And then they do a thing that says, well, I can make a non-compliant lot, and then I offer a proof plan on the other two lots. And you say, well, well, hold it, you can't make a non, we're not gonna approve a non-compliant lot. I mean, when they come in and just say that, that you, you have a single lot, and you could come in with an A and R and do, you know, a division into two, and then, you know, if you, if you came in with a subdivision proof plan, that, that subdivision has to serve this lot. That, that, you know, and I just, you, um, I, I think it's, it's beneficial if they really spend some time reading the regulations, and, and before they, they, you know, start.
Taking your part.
Start, start, you know, they, they come in with, they come in with a division.
Bob, with this one ahead, does, does that one, I mean, I think by, by creating a road, they create more than two lots, and that why it's going for flexible frontage?
Well, if, if, if they came in and created a, I'm not sure what they're trying to, if they come in and created a road, they could create two lots.
Because he did come in, he did come in for preliminary analysis on this one. I think he met the requirements for flexible frontage.
But this, this is a lot that they wrap around, and this is the, 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 this is, they're, they're also the abutment of this plant, so these are farms and there's multiple buildings on it, and they wrapped, they wrapped a, a lot around the existing home and around the existing buildings. That lot has a hundred and thirteen plus thirty, twenty-three, that, that lot is, is non-compliant. It doesn't have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And we, we, we can't approve non-compliant lots. And, and then he said, okay, well, now that I've taken care of the farm and the house, I'll show a proof plan on the remainder. And he doesn't, he doesn't. And, and he doesn't, he doesn't show a proof, you know, if, if the proof plan is intended to show that the remainder land could then be divided, the remainder is a single lot and it could be divided into two lots, we're still, we're still stuck with the problem that they, they, they drew a, a, a plan that can't be approved. And then they divide in the remainder.
The revised plan they, they just submitted, came in around three o'clock yesterday, so I haven't had time to look at the revised plan that they submitted.
I, I just, um, no, I, I don't, I don't want people, you know, chasing their tail in this process, uh, but... Or, or, and maybe, it's really not the applicants, it's their consultants that are reading the regulations.
It's the engineers. We had the same issue when before we had the, uh, compliance of lot down a fifty-foot radius that can go from the street to where the house is. And we used to get lots that were like eight feet wide for, for four hundred feet. And then there would be a lot of open land and, um... And so we, we had to change it and it's, it's... It, I think it has to do with the cost of land today, uh, and people are trying to use our bylaws to do a geography test to see if they can fit more into, can they make three out of one, can they make two out of one? And I don't know how to really stop it, but it's... They're not complying with the contention of bylaw, they're just taking a single lot and dividing it.
And, and if you, if you think in the, in the prior application, you know, he does proposed a shorter common driveway and then two longer individual driveways to reach the houses. And if you thought, all of this could be solved with a compliance subdivision? And, and, and then you'd have two shorter driveways? And you think, at, at the end of the day, how, you know, how much difference, you know, you're thinking the asphalt is, when, are we, are we bending all the rules, coming back night after night after night after night to have continuation discussions? So, it boils down to, I could possibly save ten, ten feet of gravel driving? You know, I think, uh, I mean, it, it, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's that type of stuff, it's, uh, maybe, maybe it's, uh, it, it's me is, some, this thing's been...
So, yeah, but we're, we're in the middle of continuing the, I mean, we should continue it and then we can continue the discussion, but we shouldn't be talking about it.
I'm sorry.
So, um...
I, I move to continue the meeting to, uh...
October fourth at six thirty P M.
October fourth.
Second.
Six thirty.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, we can talk more about it.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't have anything to add. I, I really wanna be helpful, so, so.
Okay. No, I, I completely agree. Okay, next is correspondence, uh, the Chronicle. The last edition was already on September fourteenth. And the Chronicle is where we would post, uh, our postings for meetings, uh, our required postings. So we have to decide where else we're gonna do it.
Either the, uh... The other Westport paper?
Shorelines.
The Shorelines, well, the Standard Times. The Shorelines gave us, they're approximately the same cost. And it is a little more, more advertising, but it's approximately the same, it's maybe like five or ten dollars more.
So...
It's gonna be around a hundred and sixty dollars for advertising for two weeks.
So do we have any idea about the circulation in Westport of these two papers?
The Shorelines and the Standard Times.
Yeah, but I mean, what's the difference between the two?
It depends on...
Not the cost, but how many, how many, how many, how many papers?
No, I don't...
How many papers?
How many papers do they produce every week?
Not much.
Cause the Shorelines only comes up once a week, like the Chronicle. And, so we have the Standard Times and the Herald News, so... Who gets what, you know?
Yeah, which has more circulation, you know, in Westport?
Right. In Westport.
The, uh, Shorelines or the Standard Times?
Well, I see legal notices in Shorelines for, uh, I don't know whether it's our zoning board of appeals, but I know, uh, other entities are using Shorelines.
Good.
And the others also use Shorelines.
Yeah. And I think Shorelines, while it's part of East Bay, uh, Shorelines itself, it's really targeted to Westport, whereas the Standard Times is, uh, well, I mean, I get it, uh, but I don't think it's targeted to Westport. So I think if we wanna make sure we're covering Westport, I would move that we switch to Shorelines.
Is that a motion?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
But there are, uh, Mr. Chair, some items under correspondence before the Chronicle change of use in zoning board of appeals.
None of them.
Uh, on my printed agenda there, we have a change of use about long. Page seventy-two. And zoning board of appeals.
That's right across from, uh, Norwich Oak, Village.
There you go. That's a very good question. I don't know the answer to that. Since I've been on the board, I've never had that question asked of us. Um...
Is, is there a question? What is the question?
Will the planning board require site plan approval for a client's change of use?
Oh, I'm sorry.
From a school, it's changing from a school to a storage and recreational facility.
I don't think so. I don't know. I think... The, the question about parking, uh, I think would be an issue, if they're gonna have public coming as opposed to dropping kids off at school. This is the modestory, is it?
Yes.
They already, I drove by it just a few hours ago, they already have a storage, I mean, a, one of the trucks, the storage trucks is there, they have a sign up for storage and they're, they've done some drainage along the road or something, done work there.
Into, uh, driveway.
I think it would be...
That's a state highway too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a state highway, yeah. I, I think it would be useful to do that, because then we can, we can, we can look at the stormwater and the parking and the access to the road.
I think, again, this clause, this clause and on, on, on the building spec, they're showing the building permit for the renovation and the requirement for mass highways curb cut permit, which everybody seems to be under the assumption of, I mean, if you got a curb cut, you don't need it. That's not the case. If you cuts trees on a, on a butter, it's a state highway, they need to apply.
Yeah.
And, and you can't modify a curb cut.
Right. But I... I don't know what the legal answer is, but I'd like to see something happen. Maybe we could ask, uh, town council or Ralph, Ralph's...
I, I think we probably should ask town council about this curb cut situation. Because this is, I mean, this one's coming, they're asking our opinion, but there's been a couple more. They just did the work, adding additional businesses and in fact, you know, get small additions under the site plan review.
So, is this the same change law?
Mm-hmm.
And, yes, on what seventy seconds?
So he says he's talked to Ralph, who hasn't expressed any views on it, but...
Well, he probably doesn't know the answer yet, so...
Right, so, so we should assert that yes, he should come before us.
Yes, I think so.
So, uh...
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that, uh, we respond to, uh, Attorney Williams that, um, uh, it is our belief that, um, a, um, a site plan approval is required with such a change of use.
Second.
Okay.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, uh, what about a change of use from residence to a business, I mean, that...
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, a butter notification. Well, this has already happened, so... In August, a demolition permit on Cadman's neck for an existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood, as I mentioned. Okay, a notice of decision. Special permit to convert an existing detached structure into an accessory apartment. Certainly makes a lot of paperwork. And here's another one. We have a notice from the Standard Times.
That's related to the...
The Chronicle.
The Chronicle, okay.
The last...
Okay. And we have meeting minutes from August ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I've re- reviewed, uh, the minutes, uh, um, I think they were fine. I, I, I did have a, a question on C, C V E Westport, the discom- the decommissioning agreement. You recall they came in and wanted to put a, um, an insurance bond instead of the cash surety for the decommissioning? And, um... And I, I tried to, um... And, and it closes with the site plan rules and, uh, regulations were read. Did, did we make a decision?
Yes, we did. Um, we, we...
We, we have to say what?
We, we told them that we would, um, not like to have a, uh, insurance...
We're gonna hold on to cash.
We want the cash.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep the cash surety. It's hard enough to take the cash surety.
Yeah. We, the, the minute should, should say that.
Yes.
I, I move that we amend the, the, there you go, page four of the minutes to say that we advise the applicant that, uh, the, the, the board would, uh, retain the, uh, the cash, uh, surety.
You mean, instead of just saying that we're not, the board's not in favor of transferring?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they were, they were calling it a, a decommissioning. It's really a performance...
Performance bond, yeah.
For the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta make sure, yeah, nothing, yeah, that was, that's just, that's what we don't have on the other one.
Okay, uh, town planner report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that, a- as amended, that we, uh, accept the minutes of, uh, August ninth.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And we have the minutes of...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
September sixth. I've, I've reviewed those, uh, and I move to approve the minutes of, uh, the meeting on September sixth.
Second.
Five-minute meeting.
Yep.
I think it was even three.
Three minutes.
I think it was six oh two to six oh four.
Let the record reflect, two-minute meeting.
Two-minute meeting.
Bullard was present and it was still a two-minute meeting.
Right, and, and the reason that it was a two-minute meeting was it was election day and we weren't supposed to be having a meeting.
That's right.
All we did was continue the meeting, the hearing that we had posted for that day, to this date. So that's why it was such a short meeting. Um, okay, town planner report.
Okay, so the first item we have is Maya Way. So, uh, S W Cole went out on Maya Way to look at the road. There's been no improvements since twenty sixteen. Um, we have eighty-seven thousand dollars in surety right now, which was what the estimate was in twenty sixteen. And you have your Manila folders, I printed out Derek's, uh, most recent amount of what it would cost to complete the roadway and then attached is the twenty sixteen amount. So Derek put together a current estimate of what it would cost to complete the roadway and that amount is now a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars opposed to the eighty-seven thousand dollars that it was in twenty sixteen. And the eight, the one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars does include the work that is needed to, um, fix the elevated structures that are on that, that roadway that are installed. So I don't...
It feels that the elevated structures are too high, even after you repaved?
Yes, and I've been down that road, they are extremely too high. So, I don't know what the next steps are. I've tried to contact, uh, Bill Desperito multiple times for about a year now and I have no response from him.
Good luck in that.
I'm sure there's residents here from Maya Way that would be curious on an update as to what's going on since it's been going on for many years.
Mr. Messine in Maya Way.
Good.
Would like to know what's going on. Did you plow it last year?
Oh.
Did I plow it? Did you plow it? Oh, you guys have been plowing?
We've been plowing. We've been cutting the grass. We've been cutting the overhanging trees. We've been, we've been doing everything, you know, all the neighbors have chipped in and done their share of, like I said, cutting the grass, um, plowing, um, doing everything that he was supposed to do. And I think Mr. Bowden, I called you several years ago about getting him to, um, when I first moved there, five years ago I moved there, about getting him to, um, cut the grass, cut, cut around retaining ponds and stuff like that. And I think you've, you've got a hold of it once, did it once in five years.
Okay, could I ask you to come up to the microphone and identify yourself for the record?
I'm Brian Messine. I live at three Maya Way.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know what else would you like to, I mean, we've done, we've done everything.
I think we'd like the, the, the names and addresses of everybody else that's here for that, so.
There's two other people here from, from Maya Way.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Mr. Messine a question?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, so you heard Amy say what we're left with, which is eighty-seven thousand dollars of resources and a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of work.
Yes.
Any ideas, Mr. Messine, what we should do? Any thoughts on it?
I, you, you'll never, you'll, you'll never get.
I know.
Ask to Desperito. He's, he's probably in the wind.
Yeah.
I know.
So, I agree with you on that. And so, you, you think there is eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of work that, uh, makes the situation better or tolerable? Or, uh, uh, because I agree with you, you know, just calling him and expecting he's gonna call us back is a waste of time.
I, you, you, like I said, he's in the, he's in the wind.
Yeah.
I know when I bought that piece of property from him, um, the money that I paid from him at the lawyer's office, he got two dollars and fourteen cents out of the money that I paid for that property. So, the guy did not have the money to start with. Um, I don't know how much you guys asked for him for, for, um, money for that road to be finished when the development was done. You asked for eighty-seven thousand dollars?
Yes, 'cause at that time, that is what the consultant quoted for all of the work to be completed in twenty sixteen.
Plus, plus twenty percent.
Plus twenty percent contingency and the one eighty-three is also with twenty percent of contingency in it.
I, I would, my opinion, eighty-seven thousand dollars would, would, would fix probably the, I would say, some of the higher elevations. I mean, when I moved there, down the street from me, there was a sewer hole, drain hole, that was probably this far off the ground. Had holes all around the drain hole, um, and you had barrels there, so you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't drive into those holes. Uh, one of the neighbors that built on that road, when he paved his driveway, he had his contractor fill in those holes so that nobody would, you know, run into those holes and, and, and do it. You know, I'm guessing eighty-seven thousand dollars would help with leveling off some of that road. Um, some of those, you know, that, that, especially that one big, it's, it's right in the middle of the road. Um, like I said, it, it, it's gotta be two feet off the, off.
Some across three miles.
Yeah, right across, across the street from Bruno's house and, and well, and John's house, Joe's house.
I mean, I'm not sure, uh, in a situation like this, that, does the town go out to public bid?
That's, that's why we asked for twenty percent addition.
Yeah.
Because we have to do it at whatever you call it.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, yeah. And so, the question is, um, do you have an active homeowners association?
No.
You're supposed to, so.
We were, we were supposed to?
We were supposed to, yes. It's a condition of all.
Never, never was told that, never knew that.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chair, what, what we found is the time isn't on our side, right? Construction costs go up.
Never is, yeah.
Never is. And, uh, that, what, I'm not sure who, uh, does this in this case. But it, it would seem that even though you don't have a homeowners association, uh, and maybe, uh, Amy, uh, can figure out from the town's standpoint, um, how we, uh, uh, contract for the work. And then, um, whether we bid it and what the conditions are. And then work with Mr. Messine and the homeowners to say, uh, what jobs, you know, it's a hundred and eighty-two, to do all the work. Obviously, we can't do all of the work. So, how do we figure out what are the key things to do so that we do the work that is most important to be done? And get it done now, because the only thing that's gonna happen is the cost of this work is gonna continue to.
Continue.
To go up and the eighty-seven thousand isn't going to continue to go up. So, the sooner we get this work done.
You know, I, I, I can think of at least four things that can be done. At the beginning of the road, at Charlotte White Road, there is a, um, hole there, a pothole there that you cannot come down Maya Way and take a right onto Charlotte White Road without going left and then going around that pothole. There's, uh, another dr- another drain, um, sewer cover that probably needs to be lowered a little bit. That one in the middle is the worst one, um.
So, I don't know, Mr. Chair, what kind of a motion? This is like a.
Well, I think that the question is, there's six houses up there?
There's nine houses.
Nine houses? Can you bring up, um, the I S?
I think pretty much like looking at, looking at the system, I know the job, I know the original owners. The contractor, the original owner passed away.
Correct.
I know who's in, who was in.
This guy's.
Bought off of him, I know him. I, I know, I know all the players in that. And, and I know a couple of times, a couple of local guys that gone out to bid, bid to do that work over there. I mean, there's some stuff in this estimate that's, you know, like, you know, the grass maintenance and, you know, blowing the number up and stuff. I think the ninety, the top cost of the structures are probably what we should concentrate on. If we think that Mr. Desperito's gonna walk and not do anything with the thing, we might wanna look to try to, and maybe be cheaper for you as a homeowners association, to get a couple of numbers for that. And, I mean, we've done, we've done some other things on some draft roads to try to help the people that are living here now. Because now you're there, the road's not accepted, you're not getting any services, you're paying taxes. We see what's left here. If we, if we pull the barn out and we don't have enough, now the town's gonna have to pay to finish it. I think that might be the best way to go is just look, what we gotta do with the structures and see if we get, like a, like, you know, like a, an aggregate industries, a big paper company, if we come in and adjust the structures and see what kind of number they can give us to top the road. And then, you know, maybe the homeowners, those, like the shoulders, the ponds, you know, maybe that can be worked out with the neighbors. To try to get, the big thing is to get the top cost in there, something so we can accept the road and highway can go and pay it for you. And plow it, school buses and all that.
Um, you know, I mean, I've, I've been there for five years. I've, there's retaining pond next to me and, and across the street. The retaining pond next to me is, is my property. I pay taxes on it. This, the property across the street is not mine. It belongs, it, if you look at the plot plan, the, the dri- there's driveways that, from the dirt road that comes off of Maya Way, um, is part of somebody else's property. I cut that, um.
Yeah, we, when the town, when the town accepts these subdivisions, we, we're not, we have four people in the highway department?
Three.
Three.
Three, yeah. We can't go, you know, there's needs with that for, for maintenance of the drainage system, but, um, the way a lot of these, you know, that they're approved and that the town doesn't go and maintain them.
I, I, you know, I can't speak for everybody on the street, um, but I would be more than happy to continue to cut and, that, that grass, um, maintaining that, um, is, if the Westport could come in and fix that road and hopefully make it a town road that at least we could get plowed during the winter.
Yeah, that, that's, um.
What we're trying to say though too is that if we could work it through you guys.
Yeah.
Cause we, if we do, we gotta go and we gotta pay prevailing rate. We're like, like Bill, Bill Desperito didn't have to pay prevailing rate and he, he's actually gotten some bids from local people in town that I know of. Um, I think now, once this, you know, they, they, one person came to me and told me they were bidding and I told him to talk to this stuff before and make sure that they addressed everything on this list before they put the top code on so that they can, you know, cause we also want that person to get paid. And I don't want somebody to go in there, you know, I, I know the original contractor that built the road, when the original owner died, he didn't get paid.
No.
So.
So, what you're asking us to do is to go out?
I'm just, I'm just going out there just for the sake of.
I, I, what I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to ask us.
You get, you get, you get more bang for the buck if, if you do it as a private citizen as opposed to the town. The town is gonna.
Just to get the bid and then have the town come in?
We, we, we can arrange, if it's gonna be financed totally by the eighty-seven thousand dollars, and once you, we, we can approve, giving that money, calling, calling that and giving the money to you as you need it. But, um, it's a complicated process either way. If, if, if we call it and do the, have the town do the work, we, the highway department doesn't have the manpower to do it themselves. It's gonna go out to bid and it'll cost probably thirty percent more than if you do it yourself. So, for the eighty-seven thousand, you'll get more done than if we do it.
So, we should go out and have somebody bid that property, uh, that road to get fixed.
Right.
And then we come back to you with the proposal.
Right.
And, okay, it's gonna cost us eighty-five thousand, just for the argument sake. Um, it's gonna cost eighty-five thousand dollars to do what we need to do to get that road approved by you guys, but you will pay the eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, to you, and then you pay them.
And it's not a simple thing. We have to go to the select board to get it released and we have to go to the treasurer to make sure that she's okay with paying directly to the contractor. Or paying to you when you pay to them.
So, the other thing you could do is form the homeowners association that you're supposed to have anyway. So, you're the Maya Lane Homeowners Association. Then you say, I'm gonna get eighty-seven thousand, 'cause I know that's what's there. And you go talk to a contractor. This is kind of backwards. Usually, you say, how much can you do for eighty-seven thousand, right? Here's the list of all the stuff that needs to be done. This is what we got. How much can you do? And you talk to several contractors and say, what's the most each of you guys can do? Cause that's what we got to spend, eighty-seven. We want the most you can do.
Right.
And you get the best deal you can get. And then you pick who you wanna pick, because they're giving you the best deal in terms of how much they're gonna do for that fixed price of eighty-seven. You contract with them. They do the work to your satisfaction. They're working for you, not us.
Yeah.
The work gets done and then, uh, as Jim says, we go to the board of selectmen saying, the work got done and we pay you and you pay the contractor. And you have yourself a homeowners association in the bargain.
And I would tackle the safety stuff.
Yeah, but, but for the homeowners association, Amy and Nadine can give you a copy of your homeowners association paperwork, which you should have, so that you know that you should be meeting once a year and you should be putting money into it and should pay for your plowing and everything until and unless you get a town approved for it. Otherwise, and you're gonna have to maintain your storm drains and all that other stuff.
But, uh, to be honest with you, we, I don't think anything you do that we needed a homeowners association in that development.
The people selling you the lots were supposed to, it's supposed to be on your deed. It's supposed to be a deed restriction that you have to have the homeowners association.
Or this approval.
Well, how would that, how would our, how would our deed get approved without that being there, without us knowing?
I think it's there.
Huh?
I think if you go into the approval from us in registered deeds for that subdivision, it'll, it'll say that.
I, I, I'd have to look into that.
So, your attorney should have picked that up. Did you use an attorney when you bought or just?
No, we used an attorney, yep.
Well, is the idea that these roads are gonna be accepted by Westport, this road?
This one was, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if they're. It's a subdivision road. It is, it, after it's finished and, and the, the highway department inspected and we inspect it and then we go to town meeting and the, usually the developer.
So, we'll be plowing it at some point, the town will?
If the town accepts it.
Yeah.
And so, it has to meet the standards of the highway department and us. Uh, we can't just say, let's approve it anyway.
Right. Right, gotcha.
Okay, but, all right, so let's take one step backwards and say, can we get the highway department to come out and say, this, this, and this needs to be done? And then we can go and get a contractor to say, okay, this is what we need to become a thing, because we, we could, we could do part of.
I would start with this list. And you really probably need an engineer or contractor to figure out what all this means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at it and, yeah, you're right. I mean, landscaping and, and.
Well, that's pretty simple, but, I mean.
I mean, we, we, we're doing that now.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm talking more about what we need to do for the roadway. You know, for, for the, for the Westport Highway Department to tell us what we need to get done as far as, you know, with that eighty-seven thousand dollars to become.
I, I would, I would ask Chris Konsol, the highway superintendent.
I'm sorry, who's that name?
Chris Konsol. He's the highway surveyor, highway superintendent. Chris Gonzo. He's the highway surveyor, highway superintendent. To meet you out there and show them this list. And say, you know, what, what items do we really need to do? We only have eighty-seven thousand dollars to do it. We need to figure out how to stretch that money to, to do it to a point where they can, they can, uh, tell us that Westport should accept the road.
Okay, and I'm sorry, his, his last name again?
Gonzo.
Gonzo, okay, I'm sorry.
And if you call the highway department, they're, they're right, they're right next to the, the town hall.
Yep.
Out, out and back. And they have a secretary and, and they'll, they'll, tell them that, you know, that you met with the planning board and, and ask them to go.
I can contact Chris tomorrow morning.
Amy will, Amy will do that for you as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, either way, it's, it's gonna be a challenge with only eighty-seven thousand dollars, cause this estimate shows ninety-seven thousand dollars to just to do the minor, the top.
The macadam pavement or whatever it's called, um, I would think would be coming down with the price of oil, but I don't know.
That's, that's part of the problem now is when it just went up a bit too, it's crazy and it's reflecting this. I mean, three years ago, there was definitely enough money in it to finish it. Now the things that I see that are gonna be a problem, you know, like, you know, you don't wanna, you won't have Asp, you won't have the asphalt plant. You won't have bounds.
Nope.
You don't have...
I mean, three ye, three, three years ago, there was somebody out there measuring and told us, oh, you know, in a couple of weeks, this road's gonna get paved. But we've been waiting three years since then for that. And then tonight we found out that this was a meeting.
And I think at this time, this time of the year, he kinda got a hold of that, cause one of the guys was, was a guy right down the road, JR. So, you know, we did that job more than once. And I thought he was actually plowing it for him too. But now, that's why I asked you that question, cause I, I've been told that. And I, I'd be willing, when you meet with Chris, you know, Chris has my number. You set up something and tell him, please, that you come out and, you know, give you his opinion on some of the things, so... I mean, I, I think the big thing is to get the top cost in there. Fix whatever structures above grade if there's some problems with the...
That's, that, that's, I think that's the biggest thing. And then, and then maybe, if there's enough to fix those and then just put a top coat on top of what we've got. Um, other than that, I mean, like you said, you know, site preparation.
Probably you fix that and you do a little bit of patching before versus the, you know, the fifteen thousand they got leveling it. But I don't, I don't know if, I think there might be a problem with those structures that they, they might not install them correctly. They might be too high, but...
One of them is definitely way too high.
And go out there with, with, you know, when you meet, meet Chris, I'll go out there and if we gotta shoot a grade or something, see if we can do something to make it work. You know, maybe he can help on that end, I, you know.
So one of the things you're probably gonna need is, uh, the last little paragraph here, other work. Uh, you're gonna need the bounds. So the, they're saying it's three thou, one hundred and fifty each, like twenty.
What, I'm, I'm sorry, where, where are you, who can I?
Other, other work on page one.
Oh, other work?
Page work.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Street and traffic signs, yeah.
F and I means furnish install the bounds. Those are the markers that lay out the, the road.
So they're, they're, they're cerebrated spots that control the dimensions of the road right away. And they, they look like a stone pillar with a dot in the top. And they have to be dug down, I don't know, three feet.
Yeah.
Amy too, uh, on this, this, this job was designed by Site Tech. And the, the original, the original contractor building it, um, you might wanna find out if they have any, any kind of engineering on it as far as asphalt. If they were not doing any, you know.
Okay.
That, that'll be a big help if there's something out there.
Yeah, save you six thousand dollars.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the structures too, you know.
So assuming they go through the process of this group that we, that John outlined and they, and we, they get, they get a contractor and, uh, agree upon a price and the work is done, for, I assume before we can recommend to the select board the money to be, to certainly be released, that we have to have a SW call or somebody go out and inspect to make sure that, and protect them as well as us, that the work that was contracted is done correctly?
Is there still money in the review account?
For Maya Way? I believe there is. I can have Nadine check on the exact amount, but, uh, there should be, yeah.
Okay, and can you check also, I mean, we had eighty-seven thousand dollars from five years ago.
Yep.
Uh, what is that now? Is it eighty-eight? Is it eighty-nine? Is it ninety? There's been some interest.
I had Nadine check today. I believe it's eighty-seven left.
It should be accruing something. I don't think that does leave it. Cause when we release money, we always release it in interest.
Yeah, it's probably in the stock market. It's probably like fifty thousand now.
It's anything like my 401K, yeah, just about.
The other thing is like, when it's kind of over the ones from now, we're, we're having consultants do inspections. And you know, then we find out that this drainage wasn't installed correctly, it wasn't, wasn't inspected.
Right.
You know, I mean, we, we kinda have these issues now. The consultant shouldn't have been out there when that was being installed. So if there's a structure that's, you know, too high, that's why I'm just wondering if Site Tech did any asphalt samples. I know there was a big gap in between them. It was built, the original, the owner passed away and...
Probably nobody was getting paid anywhere along the line.
Well, at the, at the time, I think there was only one house on the street. And then since, I mean, there's, there's nine houses now.
I think it's like, when I was children, so...
Brian, when, when, when did you buy?
Two thousand seventeen.
Uh, I bought a lot of street. There was no houses there. It was in two thousand even eight or nine.
Uh-huh.
And it was, there was nothing in there. As a matter, as a matter of fact, I let, I let Joe borrow three hundred thousand dollars from the road. He said, I can sell a lot until, until I build the road.
Yeah, that was the first one, the one that passed away?
The first one, Joe, yeah, Joe did. And he passed away, nice guy.
Yeah.
He said, let me borrow the money, I'll pay you five hundred thousand a month. He, he had it for three months.
And he went to a lawyer, he paid everything. And he said, what happens if this guy passes away?
So then, then he won't tell us it's on yours. And he, he passed away a few months later. Happy pay. Nice guy.
So I guess my next step is to call Chris, at least get him out here.
He'll have it, you know, with the, with the square footage too. I mean, he's, he'll know what the town's paying for asphalt. For our chapter nine contractors too, you know, I mean, that, that's, that's like, I don't know who got the contract this year or one that's coming up. But it's somebody like, you know, PJ Keating, um, aggregate industries, you know. They're a little, they're probably on a, on a bigger job like that is, they'll be a little bit lower than one of the local guys.
Yeah.
So they're, they're talking about six hundred and fifty, is that tons? Or is that T and S?
Tons.
Tons. So he should be able to give you a price per ton and then figure out, you know, is it ninety-seven thousand now or is it eighty-two?
Yeah.
I just paid three dollars and forty-one cents for gasoline today. And I was up over five dollars, you know, a few months ago, so who knows?
Okay.
So, and also Amy or Nadine, uh, can get you the copy of your homeowners association that was filed with us, uh, when they did the subdivision.
I'd like to see that. I've never, like I said, I've never even...
She's, she's ready to pass the whole here to planning office.
Okay.
It would be helpful to you.
Do you have an email address?
Yes, I do.
Can I have it?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, what is, uh, do you wanna write it down or say it out loud?
No, go ahead. It's, it's Brian, B R I A N M at, and I'll spell it, R A W S E A F O O D S dot com. Brian M at Rossy Foods dot com.
Easy enough.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And I think mine also, just I have that, it's a T as in ton, and then R A, R D N B, zero, zero, one, at gmail dot com.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's your name, sir?
Uh, Brono Mora, number eleven, Maya Way.
Eleven, and your name?
Uh, Seventeen Maya Way.
And your name?
Joseph Cidero.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You in the neighborhood too?
No.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
So, hopefully we have the homeowners association. I don't know exactly what year Maya Way was done, but it was two thousand eight, seven?
Uh, I think two thousand eight, uh, the eighth or ninth, but there was nothing in there. It was just...
A fountain, I was like...
Yeah, there was nothing. There was, there was no road in there.
See, I just, we were, we were just bought a house that was the first house on the street. Yeah, you remember how long? Uh, I bought my house last year in July, so that was the first thing. And my wife, we loved the house in Dartmouth. That had homeowners association and we did not wanna be part of that. So we made sure that was that incentive areas and unfortunately now we're against a medieval goal. So I'm just gonna go around my house, I don't even know how.
But how, how old, how old was the house? Do you know how old?
Uh, the house was up two thousand twelve.
House was built in two thousand twelve. And I think the house next to it, uh, was the second house, which is in between this and mine. And it was, was built, I think he said the other day was, they've been there ten years, so, probably about two thousand ten or twelve, two thousand thirteen. There's two houses there and then I bought two thousand seventeen, I was the third house built in the neighborhood.
Well, it's, uh, always interesting.
Don't have anything in for timeline, is it?
Yes, we need...
Hey, what's next on the...
We're just hiring a, a town planner and hopefully we'll be able to have more people be able to follow these things. Cause we haven't been able to, um, and maybe we need a deadline for people to complete things, so, but thank you. We'll try our best.
Okay, and then I'll try Chris and I'll get Chris out there and see if we can go from there.
Okay.
And then Amy, is that almost the association, that'd be great.
If it's there. I'm not sure when, when it started, but it may have been the year after you, in which case we don't have one, but...
Yeah, I don't...
And, and, and again, it would, it would go away when the, when the road got accepted. So, I mean, if you guys can organize now to help get this, you know, cause if we, you know, keep trying to call billing, doesn't answer. And there's really not too much we can, we can do on this end.
Well, but there's still one more house to build. It's supposed to be ten.
Okay, who, who owns that lot? He does?
That, I don't know. That, that is, I don't, I don't know who you, you...
All the way at the end, all the way at the end.
Oh, right down at the end, there's like ten acres. It's mostly wetland. I don't think, the last I...
That was, that was gonna be his own, yeah.
Solo farm on it. Um, I don't, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't think anything will ever get built on it.
I think it was... I think it was sold though. I don't think it belongs there.
Cause it was, when, when I bought the lot from Joe.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Can I see this up?
Yeah, the one way in the back, the big one. Yeah, that's the one.
Yep, yep.
Uh, Shelley Conway?
Yes, it was sold.
That's the one, then.
I don't know who she is.
Uh, okay.
Nadine, who owns it?
Shelley Conway? Uh, forty-seven George Street, Westport.
No idea. Okay, well, thank you very much. And just keep in contact with Amy and, uh, let her know what's happening.
You guys have another copy of that?
Um, I can provide you in the email tomorrow with the copy of that. You're welcome.
I appreciate it, thank you. Amy, they, they said you were in which office?
Uh, the planning board, right across from...
Okay, right across the hall.
Uh, you can have my copy.
All right.
If I can find it again. Here, I got one. You can take mine.
All right, it's the one you have. Thank you. You guys have a good night. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice.
Um, so, uh...
Chris.
What?
As you're calling one, and I got it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna email Chris tomorrow and I'll, I'll, I'll put that in. I'll, uh, yeah.
I just wanted...
I'll, I'll fill, I'll fold in. Um, for the housing production plan, I talked to Liz Collins and I requested that this item for the Hou, the Horrible Housing Trust to give us the thirty-five hundred dollars to offset the forty hours from Serpid, um, be put on their next agenda, which is September twenty-eighth. So I should know by September twenty-ninth if they vote to give us the thirty-five hundred for the updating housing production plan. And Serpid would like to get working on it by September thirtieth, so, uh, that works out.
Good. Uh, if, if you talk to Liz again and she doesn't wanna give us, if they don't wanna give us the thirty-five hundred, then they can do the whole thing?
Okay. Okay. Uh, I will, I'll cross that bridge on the twenty-ninth, I guess. Um, for coastal healing, just an update. I know Manny's been on the emails and probably had been driving by and seeing...
I even talked to Diego, Diego one day when they were doing the curb.
Last week?
Was that last week? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it was Friday, cause Derek, Derek was on site, which is why he wasn't at Five Star.
And I saw JR over there doing the top today.
Yep.
And I did see the sidewalks look like, cause what, what Derek was saying, we got in the day, it would rain right after they dug. And that's typical, cause they dig for the curb and they didn't, they didn't compact the gravel. It's already stabilized. Looks like, cause they probably paved the sidewalks today, cause they did a concrete section of it and they were, they were paying the top cost. So I'm assuming they did the sidewalks today.
So I guess, so, so far, I talked to Derek, uh, this morning and the, just two outstanding permits for DOT. I guess it's the close out the curb cut and the utility and the trench permit. Um, so those are still needing to be done. And the line striping is to be done midweek, so I would say probably tomorrow on.
What about landscaping?
The landscaping, Derek said that there are, it's not complete. There is some shrubs in there that look okay, but it's not totally complete. Um, and Diego told Derek that that should be done by next week. Uh, they have their final inspection with the Cannabis Control Commission on the twenty-seventh. So Diego has provided the board with, um, a request to okay for a final CO. And I spoke to Diego and said that I would put that on the October fourth meeting, so Derek could get out, do his final inspection with all the work being done. Ralph can also get out and see everything that's been done. And then by October fourth, um, hopefully everything is good to go for a final CO. They can, they can open.
What, what he told me was he's having problems with Mass Highway work and he would be like, the curb that he had is Mass Highway certified. Like he had somebody set a curb before, but now the contract that it came out is Mass Highway certified. I know that's what he does. He subs for all, all the big companies doing state work. Um, the paving is the same situation, so take the contract that he's using now, isn't certified, do what they need out there. So he's been trying to, um, have Century Paving do it and...
But it's not a big enough job.
Right. He's having problems and he wants to push it off to next year or something, but I think he needs to try to, what I, what I told him is for this meeting, if he's having trouble, get a contract from, from somebody to do that work. And I, I don't see where we would hold them up as long as he had a contract with them, cause they gotta grind and pay for Mass Highway.
I think this, when I spoke to Derek this morning, I think Diego is still having the same, the same problem, yeah.
But that might be something too, where we could talk to Chris, see whoever's doing the town work. If maybe they could give him a price to do that, maybe, cause the November fifteenth, the cutoff for that, so. So that's what Century's trying to push it into next year.
For the paving, for paving, yeah.
For Mass Highway. I mean, we can try, if the weather's good, we try to get it done, but Mass Highway's gonna say, no, that's it, we don't wanna do that because it could be snow.
Really?
Yep. Okay.
This is just Mass Highway, but...
This is just Mass Highway, but you could still do your own subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
Weird.
All right, oh.
And you have to be a certified painter?
You have to give a Mass Highway contract, like especially in our situation, unless you're, like, what happens is. That water patch, that, well, the water patch actually, the cement we gave has to be given by the facilities. So it, it is us that gave that cement to do it. He's supposed to be a bonded contractor for all of those other things, but to work in the layout of Mass Highway, you need to be certified by Mass Highway. And if, if the town, the, we are, we're certified to work in Mass Highway, but. We're not doing the job.
Right.
So he needs a higher contractor that is certified here in Mass Highway. If we bonded somebody to do it, we could say, you can do it, but then we get the liability, there's no reason.
Now we should be doing that. So, is the state, what are they waiting for to approve them? The state, the cannabis?
Well, he had to have three inspections and I think it's just the scheduling of, of them actually coming out is, I don't know.
So he needs a permanent CO for the final thing for, for them?
And, and he wants to open once he, they get approved, so, once they get approved on the twenty seventh, hopefully, if that final inspection goes good with the CCC.
So this is one of those situations too where we, we let him post fifty thousand dollar bond and at the time, there wasn't enough money to do that work. Now, if we paid him, then all these items, I'm sure it's enough, but whatever items aren't finished, if he wants a CO, we can definitely, in a, in a timeline, we can get it done.
And then you'd, it depends if he got a lot of time first.
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
It's an easy.
So that's, that's coastal healing. Um, for Brookwood Solar, Derek just gave a review, um, sent to me today. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it. Um, it's just the progress report and the as-built plan review. And he made it pretty easy, um, just the, the bold ones. Still need to be addressed. That, well, they all need to be addressed, but the bold ones are really important. And then, on the back of the as-built plan review comments, that should be on. The as-built plans that aren't and the outstanding um surety amount for the remaining work. He gave a quote of seventy eight thousand. Uh, we don't have surety for this because it's solar, but I'm not sure if maybe uh.
So, I, I would ask for a hundred.
A bond. Okay.
Well, my problem is if we don't have an as-built.
Right.
So we, we, I, I don't know, how are we getting here, no, because we get this, you know, like the situation and structures are wrong on the job. We already know that the, the bridge crossing was changed.
So I'm, mine doesn't have any green.
Any what?
You said the, the significant ones are highlighted?
Oh, they're in bold.
Oh, in bold, okay, no change notice.
Yeah.
That's how we're not, you know, okay, that's, that one's really, not changed. He said that it's not finished yet.
It's not, it's not at all. And there's no vegetation.
So, I think we need to ask more than a hundred.
You know, we, we've never gotten a, a plan for the duck bank.
Right.
That's in accordance with the, with.
The plan?
National energy.
We asked for plans on July seventh, when we did the site visit and Borrego didn't send Derek and I the plans until August twenty ninth.
So you, you have duck plans?
We have, we have built plans.
We have, we have some plans, yes.
But the, the, the list.
So these are one of the other things, Bob, where he's got, he's got the um underground, he comes up with a turtle for connections instead of a manhole.
Yep.
So I, I mean, even to me, I mean, it shouldn't have been a turtle, if, if we're underground electric, why are you bringing high, you know, they're not calling it high voltage, what they call the medium voltage above ground. No vol, no volts around, um, you know, I mean, they ended up on some, but it's not, it's not for you see for that type of barrier. You know, you gotta feel with the power right next door.
Mister Chair, do you need a motion on the shore?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we should ask, but I mean, I think we should, we should. We should make sure that we have an as-built plan of what to build.
Do we, there's some concerns on the drainage under the, under the solar panels. You know, we went up there last fall.
Yep.
I mean, they were cutting trenches under the panels and trying to let the water out. You know, and we had another solar company in town, they can't pull trees, cause there's so much duck working now. I mean, if the grave is that far off, um. And, and it looks like it is, you know, there was culverts in the road that were not in, you know, not direct elevation, they were putting them in and then all of a sudden it's sticking above the, way above the existing grave. So I, I got a feeling that there's a lot more issues there than just, and then the contractor was out there and told us he'd have all this stuff done in the spring. And we still don't have the acre paved.
There's really no one on that site, I mean, when I said we were gonna go for a site visit, I think he just came down to open the gate for us that one day and there's no one else on that site.
They're making electricity. Right. They're making electricity, so they don't, they don't really care about anything else.
And this, uh, um, report from Cole says in the first paragraph that the as-built plan was, uh, was requested and not received until August twenty ninth. What seems to suggest there is an, there is an as-built plan.
Yeah, we have, I have a plan that he had sent me. I don't have a hard copy of the plan, um. Let me see if I can bring it up.
So that's already, yeah, that's after last year, yeah, so they may have it. So that's, and then his number might be, not too bad.
I think we, I think we ought to be a bit more aggressive to tell them, and ask them more.
Yeah, I think we should ask for more.
Or on a timeline, if they, if they're gonna finish it.
Right.
He promised us that he was gonna do it by the springtime, so I did notice they, they tried, they wanted to cut another tree in the front. So, when you go down there, there was two big trees, but they got rid of one because it was in the way. I mean, I don't know if that was in their clearing limits for the solar field at the back. But now they got one on the left hand side that they cut the driveway in and the roots were exposed, so they were calling highway department asking if they could cut that tree down. So when we met there, I'm like, they really think you should shore up the tree so it doesn't die, I mean, we didn't give you permission to cut the other tree down. Said they needed to get our equipment in.
Well, they've cut the roots, it's.
Yeah.
Pretty large slope.
So this is the, and forgive me, it's small on here, but this as-built plan that was sent to me and Derek is only one page and it's, looks like this. That does, that's.
Cartoon.
That is what, that was given.
I think that we ought to make it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and if we can reduce it more, if we receive legitimate, uh, as-built, and we.
The one on first road, we, we actually have that on first road, right?
Which one of first?
One of the, of all's, when they have like two hundred, when, when did they establish the, the amount of surety on that for far along? Is that when they, when they energized it?
No, not before.
Or did you have, when they had, yeah?
You're the one that they're trying to do an insurance contract. Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, like, I don't have a twenty something thousand or not, no.
So, I think if you make it one fifty, I think you get their attention.
Okay.
And I think that's what we need, so. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion for that?
I would move that we set surety at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and uh. I. I request a, a plan for meeting, uh, the deficiencies as noted in the SW Cole report.
I, I think that the plans, it. I, I think when you correspond with them, you should, you should make them aware that, uh. They should be growing stuff right now, I mean, at times, at times for planting. We don't wanna see it bare again over the winter, so.
And Manny can attest that it's bare.
Yeah, and, and the palmade is gonna be planted before the frost. This is right now, they're all, you know, they got, they got, I don't know, to get any, they're.
And it's a, it's a beautiful time right now to plant, I mean, the grass is just. Even after being crispy criggers two weeks ago, it's, a month from now would be too late.
Yes.
Oh, I will get on that tomorrow.
The other, the other thing too is I'd like to.
Yeah, that's not even noted in the Cole report.
Would they see, we should be present, make sure they're using the correct suit.
And, and if they get.
The seed's sixteen hundred bucks an acre, and I think that's part of our problem, is it's, it's not, it's, they're not using the right seed.
I don't think anyone would like to. And I'd like to make sure that they get enough topsoil instead of scraping it all out.
Enough of topsoil, okay. I don't think there's any topsoil.
But I think we should set the, this, this is really your performance surety, you ask.
We're about a timeline on, on, you know, like, cause this is our other thing.
So I made the motion, Mister Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I'm asking for a timeline as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Timeline and just be sure you kick their butt and tell them that right now is the time to plant. And make sure their stuff is growing before the project.
I'll put Derek on my email too. And Manny.
Yeah, I think you can tell them that we expect them to do this.
Yep.
This is not a, a suggestion, so.
And, and they have on the project?
They do, yes.
Yeah. We, we can raise the surety.
The surety.
Okay.
I don't know what's forward on breaking ground in any of those, I'm tired of it.
Like on division?
Yeah.
I don't believe so.
How about that on first night?
Yeah, there's nothing doing that.
They haven't even recorded that yet, I don't believe.
Okay, uh, anything else on your report?
Um, yes, just the five star collision, which I feel like Manny can attest more to because. He's more familiar with the site, but um, a pre-construction meeting took place on September second. Manny was there, Ralph, myself and Russ Ogles, which is the applicant. And SW Cole was not present because they were at coastal healing. And I did ask the applicant to bring his team and engineer on the site, uh, pre-construction meeting, but he did not come. Um, basically, there's no drainage being, being done, there's no swale and runoff.
When I, when I met with him, cause Ross gave, I guess he gave him, given him a demolition permit for, for building that's gonna be demoed.
And the foundation.
So I did ask the applicant and his contractor, um, would be ready for stormwater management, so they're just looking to go and demo this. Could put the foundation in and not start any of the drainage work, uh, probably should have been started quite a while ago. So, this, this, I asked where the stage was with the Mass Highway curb cut, did you give me any of that stuff?
No.
Because I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be, if that permit was filed, there's gonna be changes, kinda like what happened on Long Plaza.
Yep.
Which is from our plan, and those, those problems that he's complaining from the abutter would be addressed in Mass Highway. So, I, I think it's pretty, and, and again, and I mentioned to him there, I said, it's not, that doesn't stop you from starting your work. But Mass Highway, you needed to apply for it, you can still work at your own peril. But I, what I tried to tell him is some of the work that you have here, I don't believe you're gonna be allowed to do.
So, so this demolition and then construction of a new building and a new site. Why aren't they before us already? The site didn't have reg.
We didn't, we didn't.
We did, we did, we did.
Okay.
We gave, we gave him a.
Twenty nineteen.
This was, and, and this was, uh, cause they come up on Mouse, uh, Mill Road as well.
Yeah.
And, and the, the drainage there is all just little shallow roadside ditches and everything and.
Right, right, right.
And it eventually finds its way up and is, where Mouse Mill and comes in, is a sort of curve, right where it comes into one seventy seven. And there's a little wooded triangle in there and there's a, I think a Mass Highway drainage basin in there.
But the, the thing is, a piece of, a piece of Mouse Mill drains into that?
Yep.
None of that property drained into that or ever drained into it. So, the line that the engineer has drawn in their plan now is actually a swale that they claimed was on the side of the road. That pitches in the opposite direction of the road, so we know that that never happened.
No.
And, and, and I keep telling him, I says, when you, when you dig this, this is what I do, I know what it's gonna look like. And you're gonna realize that that wasn't the case there and they're not gonna let you do that, so I'm just trying to be proactive. And, and let's, let's have a meeting, let's have, the engineer should agree to me, tell me what's gonna go to work. I know, I watched it go in a neighbor's yard, you know, and then he's claiming the other abutters who I asked, I, I. When he was telling, telling me, it's a, it's a machine shop that those conveyors, the gym is on the board when it gets approved. I know the, Sytec designed it, I know the design engineer, and I was aware of the contractor that was working there when it was going on, so. I know one thing, that it was designed correctly and they followed all of those regulations, cause that engineer does what you, what the board wants and what's required. So, he's claiming he has issues there, Mass Highway's coming into his property as well, but Mass Highway curb commet will solve that. He claimed he weren't doing any work in the layout, that's not a requirement, just the work you're doing is a requirement, they'll file for it. But it will make you fix whatever the problems are in the layout, and he has them, so. And then they, they need the permit and time to do that basin, and they're not gonna, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe Mass Highway will give it to me, there's no other thing, but it still needs to.
I don't think there's any other choice, but remembering the site and remembering the conveyor belt and.
Yep.
Cause I had problems with the neighbor in the back as well as five star.
No, it's an unusual, it's an unusual situation because it's everybody, you know, everybody doesn't want to be there well, and it's nice to be, to be out of discharge problem.
Right.
This property has no discharge.
We've got Mouse Mill Road, what they wanted, it was just. So, anyway, nothing else?
No. Uh, well, also on five star collision, the. The, uh, the area, if you're looking at the building to the left, there's storage of cars and it's fenced in. And I looked at the site plan today, it looks like they're supposed to be, it's supposed to be paved if there's any storage of cars, which it's not, it's just grass. And then it looks like fifteen parking spaces are meant for, in there, and there's, it's way beyond fifteen and they're just. Junky storage cars, uh, and Ralph does not have any paperwork showing, showing the.
It shows your plan for parking.
Yeah, so that also needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I, I, I go by there all the time on my frequent trips to Ace Hardware. I've been, I've been watching that little storage area that I know is supposed, when we granted this approval, had to be paved and.
Yeah.
But there's been cars sitting there, stored there, so, you know, it gets down to the old, uh, issue again of enforcement and.
Yep.
I just think he's gonna put a foundation for a building up and he hasn't. When you look at a site like that, the, the drainage needs to be addressed first.
First, right.
You just can't throw the, because now it's time to wash it down the road, we've got three highway guys. You know, when you get in an emergency in the middle of the night, and it's a lot there below, you push all the, all the road. That's what's gonna hap, that site is habitual, just drainage issues, it has no drainage.
Yep.
What was done shouldn't help it, but they can't just ignore it.
Right.
Yeah.
How about, how about, um, did we have a, we have a timeline for Long Plaza, cause I seen they were doing a lot of work out there.
That was, that was a three month, uh, temporary.
CO.
CO, so that was in July, so they have till August. I wanna say they had till mid, I'm sorry, October, they had till mid-October, but I did drive by that after I went to five star collision and they are actually doing a lot of the work. Not that I should be, maybe I should be surprised, but they seem to be. Not that I should be, maybe I should be surprised, but they seem to be coming along.
No, I bought sandwiches now, I was saying.
Was it good?
Yeah.
Do they have a deli in there too, or?
So, so we have an invoice?
Mister Chair, I move we approve the Amazon invoice for thirty five dollars and seventy seven cents to pay for postcards.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, short and long-term planning, uh, just has to do with the Route Six, uh, Bob and I and Jim Hart that met with Mike Rodericks, Paul Schmidt, and representatives from, uh, Senator Markey's office, Senator, um, Orrin's office and Representative Keating's office, um, on Monday, Monday, yesterday, in this fight. And, uh, it was an interesting conversation about how to fund all this infrastructure and stuff that we're planning to do all. It's not so easy, so, to make a short list, but they all said that they would help us, so. Hopefully they will.
And they all showed up and they all participated.
Yeah, and they all seemed to get along, so they worked together, so it's, and it's amazing, we have a picture of everybody standing here. There's two short people, and you might guess who they are. And everybody else is over six feet, and I guess you have to be in that business, you have to be tall.
We, we made the picture, we, we made the picture.
We made the picture. Well, we stand out.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.